I apologize for my delay.
All right, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on March 11, 2025. It's 7:10 PM. Can we get a roll call, Martha, please?
Roll call. Commissioner Jose Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Jasnil Singh.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Mohinder Khanda.
Present.
Alternate Commissioner Diego Castillo.
Present.
Chair Steve Bassey.
Present.
For the record, Vice Chair Renee Mandongsa is out. Her attendance is excused.
All right, can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Freddie, you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Approval of... Okay, now moving on to approval of the agenda. Of this agenda. We just go through the... Miguel, just kind of go through if the normal get approval, get a motion and...
Yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this or the agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Jose Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Jasnil Singh.
Yes.
Chair Steve Bassey.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Diego Castillo.
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Mohinder Khanda.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of five zero.
This guy here. Okay. Sorry about that. Public comment period. The first fifteen minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the commission on items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Speakers shall be limited to five minutes. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the chairperson has the option of asking the person to hold the comments until the item is called. Comments on the... Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda. And no adverse conclusion should be drawn if the commission does not respond to public comment at this time. So now moving on to approval of minutes.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, do we want to open it?
Is anyone online or anything like that?
Is there? Yeah, sorry.
For the record, there's no one online to make a comment during a public comment.
Got it, okay. Anybody in the public here? No? All right. Approval of minutes. There's no minutes that are attached. Let's see. Yeah, okay. So moving on to item number five, written correspondence. Any notice of the preparation and scoping meeting for a program environmental impact report for the Merced County Association of Governments, 2026 Regional Transportation Plan Sustainable Communities Strategy. Miguel, do you want to take this from here?
I do. Whenever the city of Livingston receives any outside correspondence that are planning related, we always provide comments to... We always provide copies of that to the Planning Commission and City Council. Recently, the Merced County Association of Governments, they sent out this form, which actually is a letter, starts on page four. They're starting their regional transportation plan process as part of that. They're beginning with a notice of preparation to begin to do an environmental assessment of all the projects that are identified. As background, the regional transportation plan is a regional... I'll call it a program that's also tied with funding. They identify regional transportation projects. They also deal with transit, they deal with pedestrian improvements. And so they work with federal funds and then the state to identify and pick regional projects. And so it's usually a five-year plan, the RTP, Regional Transportation Plan. So really it's just to let the commission know that the Merced, the MCAG, is beginning that process. So they will be having a scoping meeting. They will be having a... an opportunity to review the RTP and make comments. This is always a great opportunity for the city. You know, there's some projects that we like to put on the books with the MCAG. This would be a great opportunity to do that. We would certainly let MCAG know as well as our elected officials of the council and mayor can let them know as well. So really it's just information. Are there any questions to that?
I didn't have a question. Any of the commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, so that's just information. The scoping meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 2025, and it can be accessed by Zoom. The Zoom connect, the link is there on page four. If you want to listen or participate, you're welcome to do so. We relay this NOP to staffed so they can chime in and provide comments if necessary. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, conflict of interest declaration. Members of the Planning Commission will declare any actual apparent conflict of interest before discussions or decisions about any matter in which they or anyone with whom they have a close personal relationship could directly or indirectly benefit or where such a benefit could be perceived. Any conflict of interest declarations at the time? No? Seeing none. Moving on to item number seven, consent calendar. There's nothing on the consent calendar, so we'll move on to public hearing. There's nothing on the public hearing. Moving on to item number nine, other matters. A is City of Livingston Housing Element Annual Progress Report for Calendar Year 2024. Oh, give it off to you again, Miguel.
Yes. Miguel Galvez, Contract City Planner with the City of Livingston. Every year, the city is required to provide a report to the State Office of Housing and Community Development as well as the Office of Planning and Research. Both of these are state departments. It's a report on how much progress the city made on fulfilling its housing element goals, particularly the regional housing needs allocation, as well as what efforts were made in implementing many of the programs who are identified as part of the housing element. This report is submitted to the state every year. Oftentimes, if the report's not submitted, then cities are not eligible for any type of state funding. So it's really informative, but it's also imperative for the city to submit these reports due to the state in April of each year. They give you a sixty-day latitude to submit it afterwards if you're having trouble getting that. So this is the report. The actual report is based on forms that are provided by HCD. There's about, there's like one summary table, and there's probably about seven different tables afterwards. I include the two main tables and their attachments. Table B, let me just preface that. The housing element, we're finishing up the housing element from the last cycle, the fifth cycle housing element, which ended June 30, 2024. The next cycle started July 1, 2024, and it's going to take us to 2032. So we're starting the next cycle, the sixth cycle. And actually, that housing element is under preparation. Rincon is a consultant firm that's preparing that. They had submitted it to HCD. HCD reviewed it, provided comments. They revised those comments, and that has been out for additional review to the community. So we are finishing up a house element, but we're starting a new one. So we'll be including new program goals and we'll have a new number for regional housing needs allocation. When we go to page three, table B, when it comes to the number of buildings that were constructed, the city issued five building permits. One was an ADU, and four were mobile homes in the mobile home park there along Peach Avenue. Those were the only housing units that were constructed. They received a certificate of occupancy during calendar year 2024. We did have several planning applications that came in during that, and those are listed on page two. We had a site plan design review 2401, general plan amendment 2401, and rezone for a twenty-unit multifamily project called the F Street Project. That application came in, I want to say in November of 2024. They're again wanting to rezone, amend the general plan to convert that from residential to multifamily to develop twenty-unit apartment projects. The applicant is kind of on hold because we're dealing with the water service, the city's ability to provide service to the applicant. The comment letter we got from the city engineer was that they would have to provide their own city well to provide water service for that. But that may be changing, and so once that is reconsidered by both the public works and the city engineer, we will probably issue a new condition of approval letter, if you will. And I suspect they'll want to move forward on that. So that project's kind of on hold. I know the applicant will say, well, what can I do? So I'll reach out to them once we get some clarification from our Public Works and Engineering Department regarding water service in the city. The other application we received was a conditional use permit to develop VA housing. This is a proposed community care facility. If you're aware of that, I think it's the Masonic Lodge. It's the largest social hall. They're off of Seventh and Peach Street, the northeast corner. We have an application to convert that into a community care facility for adding seven dwelling units for homeless, or I shouldn't say homeless, for veterans out there. The application has started its review process. I know our engineering department has made comments on the development of that application. And we're working with the applicant to iron those conditions of approval out. The other thing that I want to mention, and this is very significant, is that during 2024, self-help enterprises came in and asked for a ministerial approval of an eighty-unit affordable housing project on B Street that would be located at the southeast corner of B Street and Wynton Parkway. The state has given great latitude to affordable housing projects. That says, you know, if you want to develop in a commercial zone, we're going to kind of take the city's discretionary approval away, and you can just get a building permit and move forward with developing affordable housing in a commercially developed zone. And so they've come forward in 2024, and the city provided what's called a ministerial approval for AB 2011. So when I reflect, you know, we do have a lot of projects that are coming on board. We have, you know, the... We have an application for the twenty-unit apartment complex there that, as I mentioned, we have the villages. That item, it's four hundred and eighty unit apartments. That's over on, off of South Livingston, off of Main Street, Lincoln. That's scheduled to go to the city council for their time extension consideration, March 18. We also have Tera Santa Villa apartment projects, and they're, you can see that they're underway. It's eighty units. They're hoping to have that project completed, construction completed by July of this year. And then Self-Help Enterprises is interested in moving forward with applying for building permits at this time. They're looking at having the building permits applied for in May. So starting with the next housing element cycle, we're really going to be coming forward with a number of housing projects. You know, we kind of fizzled out because of, really, these projects are driven by the applicants. The city is not in the business of developing homes, and so we've been responding to development as it comes in. But in the next housing element cycle, we're going to have a number of housing projects that we're going to be able to take credit for, specifically those that are considered affordable housing projects. You know, we have eighty with Tera Santa, eighty with the Self-Help Enterprises project. Initially, they called it B Street. Now I think they call it River Glen. So those will be coming... The city, the community will begin to see that. New home construction, I already talked about that. We really don't have any new subdivisions that have been approved. Everything has been built out. As you know, with the city's general plan update, we're looking at a number of scenarios. One is to kind of keep the status quo, don't develop anything further. Number two is build out to the city limits. Number three is an expansion, which at the last planning commission, we had our consultant provide an analysis of all those three land use alternatives, and they've went back. They've taken comments from the commission, and they've also have received, well, the city has received comments from a number of property owners that said, hey, enter the expansion alternative, you know, include my property, include my property. And so they're kind of readjusting that. At the end of the day, those signs will be back, will be brought back to the city for consideration by both the Planning Commission and City Council. Our next meeting with the Planning Commission, I believe we're looking at June for the next session of the land use alternatives. We were thinking about May, but there's a, the consultant has a conflict with our meeting date then. In any event, we'll be prepared to talk about what the city can do to bring more housing and all general development to the city. You know, we'll be looking at our master plans for utilities. We'll be looking at, you know, how and where the city wants to grow. Again, this is, starts off with a recommendation to the city council, and then the city council will select a preferred land use alternative. It might be a hybrid of picking out different options of all of them. And then we'll open it up for an environment review and come back. Again, one last time, one additional time for both Planning Commission and City Council, consideration of preferred land use alternative, with a lot of the details worked out on that. So I kind of digress, but I want to give you a picture that even though this year we have very little housing development, things are looking bright for the city, and I have high expectations. and I have high expectations that we'll continue to make progress. Table B shows a new number that we have. I think it's 1,097 dwelling units that the city has to accommodate. Again, not build, but provide enough, provide sufficient land where someone wants to build housing, you know, they can meet that, they can develop housing to meet that need. And it's further broken down by income category. You see there on page three, on the green area, 311 has to be low or 210. It's broken down further by income category. The other thing that the city does, or the city's required to do, is look at all the housing programs that were identified in the housing element, and that's the bulk of the table. It's Table D, the annual housing element progress, the housing element implementation. And so what we do is we provide what's listed in the housing element, you know, by housing program, what the objectives were, and what progress has been made. And quite frankly, there was a number of code amendments that we wanted to do, that we needed to do. At the end, we were unable to do that. We had presented some code amendment suggestions, and at the end, and the staff was directed to put that on hold. So we did not move forward with any code enforcement, I mean, code, sort of ordinance text amendments, as we call them. But we're coming back. With this next housing element cycle, we're identifying lands that the city will be recommending that should be set up for rezoning from commercial or single-family to multifamily. That's part of the housing element process. So we'll be identifying additional multifamily sites that can be used for that, and we'll be revising all of our housing programs and looking at all of our number of code amendments that we need to do. They're listed out there. Some of these are intended to comply with state requirements. Other ones are just to facilitate development in our community, our city. And these will be presented back to the planning commission and city council for consideration. So this is a report that is presented to the city council. We asked the planning commission to consider it and provide a recommendation that the city council accepted and direct staff to submit it to both the State Department Housing and Community Development Department and the Office of Planning and Research with the, both with the state of California. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address those.
I did have one question. It says we issued five building permits, but in, on the table exhibit on 2024, it's just four.
Yeah, the building permits that are counted are the four mobile homes, and there was one ADU. And these are listed by income category. So we can, we count those four mobile homes as kind of being, they're not deed restricted, but they're low income. We consider them low income because the folks that are renting there, they rent the space. And I was talking to the gentleman that runs it, and I think they charge like $700 or $900 per space out there. But it's affordable because the mobile homes are generally cheaper than a regular single-family home detached. And usually, people will have a lower house payment to pay that off, or usually, they just own it outright. But it's an economical way for many people, particularly our seniors, to have some level of privacy, but also housing. You know, they share the common roads and things like that. The ADU, we consider that a very low, very low, low project, depending on the size. And often, that is based on the fact that usually, the accessory dwelling unit is smaller. Sometimes I've seen them as small, it's like 500 square feet. And particularly those that are junior ADUs, these are ones that are incorporated within the actual house, or they're connected. It's not a standalone. And so those usually are like a studio apartment, and so those are much more economical. And actually, we have provisions in our zoning code that says, you know, the owner has to live in one of them, and he can't sell them off. But it provides a real economical way for someone to find housing. You do have attached accessory dwelling units that are not incorporated, and you have detached accessory dwelling units that can be up to 1,200 square feet. And oftentimes, these are anywhere from two to three-bedroom units, and those are might be in the low to moderate income categories. So Table D really looks at those that, you know, do we have any that we require them to have deed restrictions that they maintain affordability for a long time? And all that's really driven by the market. But like I said, we're starting mid-year. So this starts July 1st, 2024. And so I know we have had a number of applications for new ADUs. I think we have, I might be wrong, but I know we have four. I think we might have six applications for ADUs beyond this that are already in the process for the next housing element cycle.
So just for my clarification, the one that was approved falls outside of the scope of these income levels. That's why it's not listed?
Right.
Yeah, if it's a, if it should actually count towards our arena.
Yeah, it should be under.
Extremely low, right? You mentioned?
So there should be a total of five. So the number actually, the remaining should only be, should now be 1088.
Yeah. I'll have to go back and look at that table. There should be five there. I apologize for that.
Any other questions?
The tables on the state are a little tricky to, I don't want to say manage, but to adjust. But go ahead.
So if we, Miguel, if we make a motion to approve, do we put like, hey, it's like a condition of correcting that or adding that one on there?
Yes, it'd be staff recommendation. Well, the planning commission to approve the resolution 2025 with adding one correction to reflect the ADU that's not listed. It should have been on there.
Got it. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-01 with the correction of adding that one ADU, so bringing that number down to our remaining of 10, 1,088 remaining arena income level? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I can give the motion to approve with the exception of the change.
Second? I'll second it. Martha, can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call. Commissioner Jose Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Jess Neil Singh?
Yes.
Chair Steve Bassi?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Diego Castillo?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Mohendran Konda?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
All right, now moving on to item number 9B, election of planning commission chair. So Miguel, if you want to take this?
Yes. Each year, at the beginning of the year, we like to hold elections. For those that are interested in serving as chair, it can be accomplished by two ways. One, you can volunteer, or two, one of the other commissioners can nominate so-and-so. So it would be appropriate at this time to nominate a chair for the balance of this year. So any commissioners can either nominate, or they can volunteer to serve as chair. It will do the same thing for vice chair. So if any of the commissioners want to nominate or volunteer, now would be the time to do so.
I think Mr. Bassi is doing a very, very good job, and I would very happily want to nominate him as chair.
Steve Bassi as chair?
Yep.
I don't mind taking that on, but if there's any other members that, or commissioners that want to jump in that rule for the experience and have at it, it's, you know, it's a learning experience. So if anybody's interested, please, more than welcome to.
You are the best.
Yeah, I'll continue the role and serve in this capacity.
Has been moved and seconded.
Yeah, I second that.
Nominate Steve Bassi as chair.
Who, Jose motion?
Jose, I think, motioned and Mohendran seconded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Jose Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Jess Neil Singh?
Yes.
Chair Steve Bassi?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Diego Castillo?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Mohendran Konda?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
All right, moving on to item number 9C, election of planning commission vice chair. Any, and I guess I'll let Miguel.
The same thing. If anyone is interested in volunteering or nominating, now would be the appropriate time to nominate someone to serve as a vice chair. The vice chair will serve when either the chair is absent or the chair has a conflict of interest and cannot vote on an item.
And I don't know what Renee's, what her stance was on this. I know she's been doing, in that vice role.
You can postpone this if you'd like to the next meeting to ask her.
What's the other commissioners?
So my question is, if we nominate her and she declines the position, can we go back to a vote for somebody else who would want the position?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. So if we nominate her, and then, and then kind of do our thing here, she can always go back then?
If she declines, then we honor her decline, and we just open it up again. It's okay. She wants to serve.
Any other commissioners want to volunteer for the vice chair?
We recommend Jose to second position, Jose.
I just want to point out, this would be, this would have to be a regular member. At this point, we only have four regular members and two alternates.
Oh, it has to be a regular member?
Yes.
Okay.
So it would be Renee, to choose from Renee, Steve, Jess Neil, and Jose.
Okay. Yeah, if, if that's the, I was just looking at it. Yeah, if that's the, if Mr. Konda wants to nominate Jose for that vice chair role.
If she already, she don't want it, so we recommend it to him.
I think what he's saying is nominate Renee, and if Renee doesn't want the role.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So for Renee, then if she doesn't want it?
Yeah, if she don't want it, so second number, Jose. That's fine. Right?
Yeah, I'm up for seconding on Renee's for vice chair. And if she decides that she wants to negate that, then I'll be, if we go back to a vote?
So you'll be okay?
I'll be, I'll be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Nominate myself or have someone nominate me for that position.
I'm sure more than others will nominate you.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so the consensus is that we are nominating Renee Mendonca for vice chair. Can anybody want to make a motion? So I'll make the motion. Okay.
And then I'll second the nomination for Renee.
Okay. Roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Jose Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Jess Neil Singh? Chair Steve Bassi?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Diego Castillo?
Yes.
Alternate Commissioner Mohendran Konda?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, so moving on to item number 10, report of the community development director. Miguel?
Recent city council actions related to planning matters. On February 26, 2025, the city council discussed two training workshops for both the city council, the planning commission, and the recreation commission. One workshop would be on the Brown Act. The Brown Act has to deal with local government meetings that are open, and they're open to the public, and it allows the public to participate in the decision-making. So that's one workshop. The second workshop is the AB 1234, and that one has to deal with training and ethics for those that are serving as an appointed or elected position, making sure you don't get yourself in trouble having to deal with any type of economic disclosure violations with the FPPC. Staff, I don't know, they have, staff was going to send out, I think, a monkey survey to check dates that are available for either March and in April. My suggestion would be if the commission is interested, we can schedule one of the workshops, the Brown Act workshop, if they're all going to be here, if all the commissioners are going to be here, for the April 8th planning commission meeting. And have that Brown Act training workshop, and we'll relay that to the city council. Since the planning commissioners are normally scheduled, and you're going to be there, then we can invite the city council to participate, unless there's some different direction that the city council is going to pursue.
You're saying the Brown Act and the ethics training together?
No, just one, one at a time. I believe the attorney was saying they would like to do the first one, which is the Brown Act training. So anyway, stay tuned for that, but if, I'll talk about this under, on the horizon. If it's the commission's desire, we can report to the city council that for the April 8th planning commission meeting, the commission would be open to having the workshop done, the Brown Act workshop done. And we can relay that to the city council and see if it works for their schedule or not.
Yeah, no, I just, I think that'll work out.
That'll work out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just keep it like, but if it'll work out for the council, if it's going to be a joint thing.
At that meeting on February 26, I also heard that the council is interested, and I may be speaking out of term, I did not attend the meeting, but I watched it on the YouTube video, of scheduling workshops, town hall meetings, to develop a strategic planning process that identifies goals and priorities. So it's kind of like a town hall meeting, saying, okay, you know, residents, we want to hear from you. So they were discussing about starting that process up, maybe having three or four meetings a month. And that would be perhaps here at the chamber, or perhaps at some other venue at a school site, for example. Oh, one meeting, okay. I was taking notes on, watching the YouTube, but thank you for clarifying that. Looking to our councilors that are present here. Okay. We'll get back to you, but it's, it's just information of the council, you know, was conducted on February 26, 2025. We did take an item to the council on the appointment of a member to serve, one of the planning commission alternatives to serve as a regular member. As you know, we only have four members, and we have two alternates. I think a question was brought up that perhaps one of our alternates, Mohendran, did not, was not a resident or did not own property. And staff has confirmed that, yes, he is a resident. He owns property in the city of Livingston, and so he's, you know, that's not an issue. I know that question came up. So I know the council also asked that staff open up, begin advertising the position for a planning commission alternate in the event that one of the alternates gets appointed to a regular member. But the council may appoint either of the alternates. They can do what, you know, what they like, what they wish. But I just want to let you know, they had that discussion, that dialogue, and an appointment was not made at that time. Other items that are not council-related, the city conducted a minor subdivision committee. Other items that are not council-related, the city conducted a minor subdivision committee. The minor subdivision committee is composed of the planning chair, the planning director, the city manager, and they review minor subdivisions such as a parcel map, lot line adjustment, things like that. And so we met in February to review, consider two lot line adjustments that were proposed by Gallo. They want to reconfigure some of their lots to match the property lines with what has been developed on site. Those were approved by the minor subdivision committee, and we're finalizing that with our city engineering, land surveyor to have those recorded. Housekeeping items, real important, April 1st is the final day to submit your statement of economic disclosure for this last calendar year. So if you haven't done so, please do so.
When we complete the, are we sending anything to anybody, or are we just completing it? Because I know I completed mine.
Yeah, I understand is, as you're preparing, you submit those to Monica.
Monica, okay.
Monica, that's the news.
The Form 700? So now you are to do it online. The FPPC will send, should have sent you a login and all that information on your city email. So be on the alert, and if you haven't, please reach out to Monica.
So my question is, when you're done, because they, they send you that you've completed the form, does Monica get one automatically?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have to do anything after?
No.
That's the question, okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Martha. Things are always changing, so thank you. I don't have any other housing, housekeeping items on the horizon. We don't have any items scheduled for the April 8th meeting. That's why I was suggesting having the Brown Act training workshop for that date, if that works for the commission. That concludes the director's report this evening.
Okay, planning commissioner reports, announcements, future agenda items. Any commissioners have any comments?
Yeah, I have a question, who need my address proof? Who asking me the address proof they need?
Who, I don't know. I didn't chime in on that meeting, I don't know where that question came from. He's asking who wanted proof of his address or whatever.
I would encourage you to watch.
Because City of Livingston, I, they have all the paperwork, my housing bill, all you have it, 2020, I am living here. So all the my bills going to, from City of Livingston, under my name.
Yeah, I don't know.
So who need my address proof I gave to them?
I would encourage you to watch the, the YouTube meeting, I, I believe it's one of the council members that's not present here, but I know that question came up as that, you know, why you were not present at the meeting, and do you still own property? Are you eligible to serve on it? So that question came up.
Okay, so I already clear with you, right? I tell you, I am living here, my address is 1041 Main Street.
Yeah, staff has verified that you do indeed do own property here in the city of Livingston, so, and you presented your water bill that shows that you're making, you know, you're a resident here as well. So not only do you own property here, but you also actively live on the property, you have a.
I sell my business last month. I telling you I am selling my, my, my business because my heart surgery, sometimes I cannot do hard work. That's why I sell my business. So somebody have objection, I sell my business or what does that have any problem?
I think, I think you've satisfied the, the request of showing address, the proof.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other commissioners? I just wanted to kind of follow up on that, the last meeting where we had the folks come out, did we get that message across to the PD and like for that stop sign evaluation and all that stuff, that request on F Street?
Yes, that, you know, that's very dear to city staff. I know actually, city staff or city engineer in the police department had already identified a number of stop signs to be evaluated, so this is, you know, this is something that's already in the process, it's just hadn't come to that, that, that level yet. I don't know where that's at, I, I need to speak with both the city engineer and the police department. I did email them the concern that was raised here at the planning commission, they are aware of it, and the city engineer did respond as, oh, yeah, you know, we've been studying these, and so, I can report on where they're at at the next meeting.
Okay. Anybody else?
Do we need to give, do we need to confirm for the meeting, for next meeting to do the Brown Act now, or do we just email you, what, how do you want that information? Or we're going to just email?
How I understood it was, we're going to get feedback and see if it's, it's doable on April 8th.
Okay.
And then we'll get something correct. That's how I understood it, but.
Yes, if the commission is interested in having the workshop done for the Brown Act here on April 8th, we'll relay that information to the city council and the Parks Recreation Commission and see if that date works for them. If it does, then we can confirm that, we'll, you know, we'll get a message to everyone here on the commission, relay that. I think it would be very handy, I mean, that's a regular meeting, you're, I would expect that you guys would have set that day aside already, so it makes sense to do that. But if it's confirmed, we, I'll ask Martha to go ahead and relay an email message to each of the commissioners.
From the commissioners, is that a reasonable date?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say just, I don't know if we should just ask everybody here today, but I would say that would be a great date. That, that way we get the ball rolling, it doesn't, you know, because I know they have, it has to go to council and they have to say if yes or no.
Does that, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
My friend's son is die here when I not be here, so he come to me and he asking me stop sign for two on this way, on the F Street.
Oh, yeah, F Street, yeah.
He said, this very happen, almost within two month, I think, three people die in our area.
Yeah.
So we need, must be need.
So is the April 8th date good for you?
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Diego, I'm, I'm good?
Mm.
That works for me? Okay. Cool, yeah, yeah, that'll work.
Okay, we'll relay that information to city staff and the city council and confirm.
Just so Mr. Konda, that, that concern was brought up, and we let, Miguel has expressed that to city staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
All right, any other commissioners, any comments, concerns? No? All right, well, that adjourns the meeting, it is 7:55.